The August 15th meeting of the West Rock Hill Township's four supervisors, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, there will be an executive session following this evening's meeting to cover personnel issues and real estate issues. We have a consent agenda for this evening, which consists of the July 18th minutes, the win plan review and status and escrow release, emergency services report, building zoning and building permit report, public works report, and conservation committee. And just to remind you, all that information is on the web. If you want to go out and look at it on the website, it's always out there the Friday before the meeting. Okay, so are there any questions about the consent agenda?
I have none, other than I will abstain from the minutes because I was not allowed most of the time.
Okay, then I'll make a motion. Make a motion? Okay, and I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Confirmed appointments, Tim Snyder.
Good evening. How are you doing today?
Good.
Can I see over here?
You could just stand.
He is standing right here. The mic's better.
The mic's better. What I would like to talk about is the PSA fees, first off. I was here, I think, back in 2014 and covered this same thing. In reviewing some of the issues, the main issue I have, and Greg and I have talked at length about this, having the escrow fund, I understand the township's position and I understand it has to be done. From my side of the, and most developers, and most builders, most contractors, most homeowners, understand the other side of that. I have to be able to depend on the township to follow the guidelines that they set forth. And one of the issues with the escrow, and I don't know if the board can address that, Jay, I don't know if you remember last, I don't know if the board remembers last time I was here, but you said you were going to review, you were going to look into. I had two tra, I had two letters in the same envelope was sent, and it was a hundred-dollar PSA fee. I don't know if you remember back then, but...
What year was that?
I think it was 2014. And this has all come up again, I kind of got back into some issues, some things with the township for development, and I was reviewing my charges. One of the problems, one of my concerns with the escrow is I've never got, I finally got a copy of my escrow bill, or my escrow statement, I've never got a copy of any of the bills for the escrow. So I depend on the township, and that's, I don't think that's, I don't know whether the board can change that, or is willing to change that, but I think I should, I think everybody's entitled to have the bill. If you had an account with me and I was taking money out of it, I don't think you'd be too happy about it in the end. I've never got any of the bills or invoices forwarded to me from that account. Now, that being said, in the...
Before you get to that being said, my only deal with this is...
Let's deal with that, because if you, you made a statement there about the getting two bills in one envelope?
Yes.
The time that you talked to me?
Yes.
It's the 2014. Would that, why would that happen?
Well, let's go with the, we can get him copies of the invoices.
Yeah, whenever anybody asks for copies of bills, we can get them copies of the bills. Usually when we do the mailing, we just send out the invoice, but if somebody says I need some copies of the bills, we make them available to anyone who wants to see them.
But wouldn't everybody want to see, number one, wouldn't you want to see it?
Why don't you take care of you and say, "From now on, I want to see all my bills."
Well, I can do that. My concern was the PSA fees, I didn't know if I was going to get charged for printing all those bills out each time they print the bills out. Now, I did look into your, I don't know what you would call it, your regulations or whatever.
Fee schedule?
Fee schedule, yes. Part of it, subdivision and land ordinance contents. It says, "Now such fees shall be reasonable in accordance with ordinary and customary charges of similar services in the community, but in no event shall the fees exceed the rate or cost charged by the professional." 2014, January legal, thirty-seven dollars. 2014, PSA fee, January legal, fifty dollars. So I was charged fifty dollars for a thirty-seven dollar bill. 2013, legal. Now, if you go further into this, it says... Bills will be billed in accordance to fee schedule and township administration expenses shall be reimbursed at a ten percent cost or charge, but not less than fifty dollars per invoice. And that's where I have problems. Some of my, I got one for seventy-four dollars and I had a fifty-dollar fee. That's almost seventy percent. A hundred and eleven dollars and a fifty-dollar fee, that's almost fifty percent. A fifty-five dollar one and a fifty-dollar fee, that's almost a hundred percent. Now, I understand the township has to cover their expenses, and I have, I'm not here to argue that at all. I'm just here because a hundred percent, or close to or above that, is a little, I think, excessive. Ten percent, from what I'm understanding, when I looked into, eight to twelve percent is standard for township recovering expenses. I don't have a problem with the ten percent, I'm having a problem with a flat fee of fifty dollars, no matter how many pieces, for one piece, per piece of paper. But that's right in there, and I don't know if that can, if there's a reason for that, or if somebody can tell me why, or...
It costs the same amount of money. Whenever Sherri has to be building, it costs usually the same amount of time, whether it's a five-dollar fee, or it's that, she has to handle, she has to balance it, she has to balance the escrow account, she has to send out the mailing. There's a handling cost, and there are fees associated with that, and costs associated with that, whether it's a five-dollar bill or a thousand-dollar bill. There's these costs associated with it.
And while it doesn't sound equitable, the theory behind is, the goal we try and reach is that developments are self-sustaining, so that taxpayers don't wind up funding any of the costs of the township that result from a particular development. So yeah, ten percent, some, a lot of townships, fifteen percent is more normal, but he's right. It costs as much money to process a thirty-dollar bill as it does a three-thousand-dollar bill.
Does that make sense?
It makes, I understand it.
You don't agree with it?
No. I, yeah, I think, well, the other problem here is, we're a, and I don't want to state this the wrong way, but you're a monopoly, in the sense that if I want to do business in West Rock Hill Township, or I own a piece of real estate, which we have for twenty-some years, twenty-three years, twenty-four years, I've lived in this township for twenty-seven or so, I have to come to the board. I have no problems with that, I understand that, but as a monopoly, there's got to be something in there that says you can't charge a hundred and ten percent or a hundred percent of what the invoices are.
They're not a monopoly, they're a government, and there's no profit, there's no motivation for the township to try and make money from you. That's not, governments don't work like that, nobody goes home, what do you guys make, twenty-five hundred dollars a year, less than that? The goal is to make sure that Mr. and Mrs. Kuchet, who have nothing to do with your development, don't finance it. That's, that's the goal.
But a lot of that is covered in the fees, and the fees for all the cost of development, in the sense of fee in lieu of, I mean...
No, 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 no.
Let's...
Different things.
That's a different thing, yeah. Fee in lieu of.
Fee in lieu of is a different thing, but they're also as fees as we do go through the subdivision process. And if it can't be, I could be wrong, obviously. To me, it, and when I say monopoly, I mean in the fact that I can't go out and hire somebody else. I can't, yes, I can buy somewhere else in another township, but I can't go anywhere else. I have to deal with the board, and I can't change that. And that's, I don't know whether there's, to be honest with you, some of them were the same day, though, that's the unfortunate part. There was two, I can read off, two of them were the exact same day, and they were built twice.
Tim, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did you ever bring these in, any questions at the time?
This just came up, I just got this about three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. I did come to the board in 2014, when I had those two bills, in the same envelope, and they came through, and up until 2013, there was none of these, there was no PSA fee. So no, as, yes, as I've had the pro, issue, I've come to the board. Now, this just came up again, this time, and that's why.
When there's activity, that's when the building happens. When there's no activity, they're coming back. When Mary or Steve send in a bill for the activity...
Right, but do you, have you seen the, the issue that he's talking about?
I don't know if you spoke to Sherri about it or not.
I've spoken to you and Sherri, yes, but you directed me to Sherri, in the sense that Sherri handles all that.
Sherri handles most of the bills.
Well, I will say, we do discuss fee schedule, but our fee schedules are not, I mean, we try to be fair with everybody, and I do understand your frustration and your point of view. So, we do, we do need to look at every invoice that's made, but there is a cost that goes along the processing of invoices.
And I don't disagree with that, I really don't, but I don't have one, I don't have one single invoice, now that's maybe a good thing, that I don't have one where I'm at ten percent. Everything's well over ten percent. So, and like I said, some of them have come in the same day, and that's where I really question the majority of, that's the main question I have to that. I wanted to make sure that I can get the invoices, copies of the invoices, without worrying about the PSA fees getting hit again, because then that's more work, but if that's what I'm paying the PSA fees for, then so be it. I don't, then, but from what I've seen in the past, and how we've worked in the past, is, the bill comes in from Mary for my stuff, the township sends me a copy of the bill, I paid Mary.
No, you don't pay Mary.
Or Mary, not Mary, I'm sorry, Mary. I pay Mary's office, Mary's board.
No, you pay my office, you pay Greg.
Well, not in the past.
In the township.
In the past.
No, no. As long as, as long as I'm in practice, I know here the mentality.
Okay. I give, okay, it was in the township, there was no PSA fee at the township.
Kind of like an escrow agreement or something like that, right?
Well, that was, yeah, I guess when it, when it ran out of escrow, they just sent me the bills, and I just paid the cop, we just paid the, paid them. And last time this came up, the issue was, if I remember correctly, Greg, we changed the way, the township changed the way they do things, they used to just send a copy of the bill to me, and I paid the township. Now they, they, I don't know, I can't remember how you worded, but basically it goes to the office more, there's more work for the office, so now there's the fee in there.
Right, in the fee, in the fee schedule, it's a fee of a thousand dollars and then a PSA escrow of seventy-five hundred dollars. The fee is the thousand dollars, that's what the township gets, the rest is seventy-five hundred to cover the bills for Mary and Steve's town. That added fee goes for the billing. Whenever anybody wants a write-to-note request or anything like that, you only get charged for copies, if you want copies, because you have the right to see whatever document you want. So there, there are copies available, or we can scan it in an email. You don't get charged extra for a PSA, for asking for copies. You get charged based off the percentage of bill from Mary and Steve, or the minimum charge of fifty dollars per the fee schedule. So you don't get charged for what the work we do, we get charged for percentage of what Steve and Mary bill, based off of our billing requirements and our billing cycles.
The percentage, but you just said in that kind of sentence there, that you charge for copies. So if I ask for a copy of the bill, then I get charged for the copy of the bill.
Twenty-five cents a copy, if you want a copy.
Okay.
And we usually scan stuff in and email it to people for free, because it doesn't charge. We don't get a fee, every time you make a copy. The township gets billed for copies from the copier, so then we pass the cost on to the residents who want a copy. But if you ask for something scanned, you scan it and email it to them, because you don't get charged a copy. There's not a cost to the township that way. So if you want a copy, yes, it will cost you twenty-five cents per page for a copy.
Or you can get it emailed and print it out yourself.
Yeah, and that's fine, but I didn't know that option, but making sure that they're available is, was my big concern.
Okay.
Every time the township processes a piece of paper, they pay, they pay money, somebody has to do that.
Yep.
And we're charged with many of the money that these people provide that run this township. So we have to look at what the cost of processing a piece of paper is. In general industry, it costs as much as a hundred hours or more for every piece of paper. So they have to pay somebody's labor, we got to pay the labor. We got to duplicate, we got to rent equipment to duplicate it, so the numbers are not fun to read.
Okay, let's move along.
That's it?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving along with committee reports. Planning Commission. Chris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Planning Commission met last night, we had two applicants. First was David Nice, he has the pole building out here on pole 309, that one, but they were in last month.
The one, the one that was put up illegally?
Yes, that one.
Okay.
Thank you for clearing that up. I don't like to bring that up, I'm not a board, let me do it. Thank you.
Indivisible.
Anyway, he was in last month, we reviewed last month, came up with some changes, suggested changes for them. They came back in last night with new changes, and we were, we were happy with what they did. They were still looking for waivers of road improvements and traffic study. We agreed to the waiver requests, with the fee in lieu of discussion to be held with staff and work. I don't know if you remember, but he, he wants to pay what it would cost him to put the improvements in. It was a lot less than what the fee schedule will call for. We see no reason to put the improvements in out there at this point, so we would like to see him pay a fee in lieu of, we want you guys to figure out what that number is going to be.
All right. Have you, have you been in the discussion?
We have had discussions.
Okay, well, we'll wait to hear your discussion.
He was directed to contact the manager to start that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. The other, other notable change was, they were proposing an extinguishable easement from the back of that pole building onto the property behind, which is owned by Dave's Apparently, you didn't like that. We didn't like it either.
There's no set like they can extend, that's like a dissolving wedding ring or something. Something like that.
So anyway, they changed that to a standard easement, and we were happy with that. I'm supposing you were happy with that as well?
Yeah, well, they're returning the agreement.
Okay, so with all these changes, we voted to recommend conditional preliminary final approval on that project. Conditionally, come up with your fee schedule. So that was Dave Nice, do you have any questions on that? All right, second applicant was Penn Foundation. They recently purchased building number one at 711 Lawn Avenue. 711 is the address, not a convenience. So are you familiar with that campus there? What is it, Upper Bucks Orthopedic, I doctor, or building two? Building one is the one you have to face, that's a drive. So Penn Foundation purchased that. They had to do a little bit of improvement to the building, and they have an outside set of stairs that lead to the basement, and they would like to put a shed roof over that. Shed roof, twelve by twenty-four, to cover the lower level entry. It doesn't change impervious service or anything. It does, by definition, require land development. So they are looking for a waiver for land development, which we were, were happy to do.
Excuse me, Chris, does that door just open into the lawn in the back? Or it goes out to a parking lot, or?
The door, it's a basement door, you have to walk down the steps.
Just a base, oh, just a, okay.
Yeah. So they want to put a shed roof over that, that'd be nice if I had the drawing, explains a lot better to see the picture. So we were on board with, with waiving that, but we wanted to see them do something with the runoff. They're not tying the roof into their drainage system, so we requested that they put either a rain garden or a dry well, splash pad type of thing. Wish I were more than happy to.
Moving to the management controls to the satisfaction of township engineering, would we say that?
Yeah, we can say that. Thank you.
Is it big enough to impact the pervious service?
It doesn't, it doesn't at all. It's covering something that's already impervious. It's not, not pumping the numbers at all.
Are they, can I ask you a question regarding that building? Since they purchased it, are they going, the reason why I'm asking this is because I've been down to the orthopedic here recently, several times over the past six months, and I see a problem with parking.
Yes, you do. We're going to address that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
You're welcome. So the building they're going to use for, as like an outpatient center. So PC voted, you know, we're recommending a waiver conditional on the splash pad or rain garden. One thing that we did not discuss was fee in lieu of. I understand there is a fee in lieu of for waiving planned development, and we did not discuss that with them. So I'm assuming you don't want me to do that at this point, so check it and ready for that? Okay, good. You beat ahead.
Yep.
So that was it for the, for the roof. To address the, the parking issues, they have thirty-four spaces now, they're going to lose one for whatever little bit of construction that they did there, so they're down to thirty-three. And like Jay said, the parking there is a micro. I go there myself, and it's terrible. They, the next lot up is lot 807, that's the main campus for Penn Foundation, and they have a parking, I think it's a parking lot, on the lower section of that, that's contiguous to 711. They had an informal sketch of that lot with an additional thirty-two spaces that would be used for the 711 property, the stairs walking down to that property. So that was just informal, they're going to, they were looking for direction on that, and we were fine, you know, to support that, as was Steve.
Is it just a stairwell, or just a sub-stairs going down, or is it going to be ADA compatible?
I would imagine whatever they may distribute or foundation, so I would expect.
I, I think they're, they'll accommodate their ADA spaces in the existing parking next to the building. At least last night, they were only talking about a stair, so it's a pretty good slope between the two parking lots, the ADA ramps might be a little extensive.
Okay.
But they did, they were trying to separate the projects, they would like to proceed with their roof.
Will they be in the driveway to the upper lot? I'm just saying, you want to take the traffic, if there isn't a connection between the two lots, then you pull in, you can't find a parking space, and you have to go out back on Lawn Avenue and turn in.
I think they also anticipate that it'll be mostly, it'll be mostly used by their employees, that their employee parking will be on the Penn Foundation property in the new lot, and the clients will use the existing parking around the building, so it would eliminate some of that pulling into the one facility and then having to drive back out and go around to the other parking lot.
Okay.
So that was all we had. Any more questions on Penn Foundation?
No.
And that's all we have.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Second, yeah. All right. Park and Rec.
Yes, hello.
Mr. Struble.
How are you?
Good.
Park and Rec had our meeting on August 8th, and I brought them up to date on the tot lot, the climbing wall and the other pieces in the, been installed in the tot lot, and I did stop by a week ago and did see a young, young boy climbing on the, on the wall, so I think it's a, it's a success so far. And we're really pleased to see that finished.
Good.
Well, it's not finished yet. You still have one piece of equipment that you need.
We have room for one piece.
That you're planning on.
We are hoping, in the future, but then, of course, we're talking next year, to get our monies in line, you're going to add to your budget for some money for us, so we'll see how next year works out, unless you see some other ideas, Jay. I know you're, you got, where you're thinking.
The committee's got to come up with a plan, and action, and the cost, and what do things cost, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, but we're, we're just, you know, glad that we've taken the first step.
It looks great.
It does look good.
It's great.
But you're taking two steps, not just one step. You enlarged it, and then you put the equipment.
Yes.
So that's true.
And then we had all this heavy rain, so the drainage worked out, nothing flooded.
Good, good.
And that was a real plus right there.
Good, good.
So that's, I was looking at that. Next is, per your update, the person we had on, the Park and Rec, has been officially removed, and we're now looking at, you know, Robbie Fisher as being a full-time member now, so we're looking for your approval on Robbie.
I've come to know Robbie a little bit, and I think he'd be an excellent choice. I think he'd be a good, good permanent decision. What do you think?
Well, he's, he's definitely energetic. I don't know him that well, I've only, I went to the fishing derby and the few meetings that we've been at.
I don't, I don't have any, I don't believe I have any objections to him on that. He seems to be very interested in the, in the world. Don, you have any idea?
No. You're volunteer, right?
Yeah.
That's what you're sitting there.
Yep.
I'd, if you need to, I'd make a motion that would, okay, the point, Robbie, as a full-time member.
Full-time member, yes.
And I'll second.
In favor, in favor.
Okay. We had a lengthy discussion, Park and Rec, on the benches. Different options. Plastic, wood, depressurized, so and so, we went through some things. I'm in favor of wood, after seeing that I can get cedar, two-by-sixes, twelve feet long, and I can cut them in half, keep the cost down. We did look at the plastic, and it's high, if you want to know some cost, I can discuss some of that with you, if you'd like.
What's the life expectancy on the wood versus the plastic?
Plastic is forever, I think. I mean, it just won't break down. But now, now we're not talking, we're talking the plastic.
Recycled plastic?
Recycled plastic bottles.
Okay.
And also, would you share, we did discuss possibly trying one out?
Right.
Getting enough material to try one?
Okay.
See what it holds up like.
But that's kind of failed.
Okay, I'm only, I was only, I was only bringing to light what we discussed.
Right, no, I just didn't want to go too far on to it, but, okay, so the vendor that we've contacted wanted to be a three-by-six, not a two-by-six, because of the flex, six, six would span.
Remember, we talked about that?
Yes. So a three-by-six would be...
Too thick for the...
Yes.
For the, for a basis.
Yeah, and the cost is way out of line.
Okay.
So it looks like that, that approach. Now, I'm not going to talk for all of the Park and Rec, that was an idea.
Maybe you could look, Bob, at what the basis would cost to accommodate the three-by-six plastic?
Ten?
Just, just, just for, you know, just for information.
Three, okay, but if you want to look at it, just, they want seventy-six dollars for one.
For one what?
One three-by-six, six foot.
Yeah, okay.
Now, that's, you know, there's no maintenance, and it's fine, but, so you take five, five times that, and if you got shipping...
Pay five hundred dollars for a trash receptacle.
Yes.
Okay.
But that's important. No, but we have a lot of benches.
I realize that. I'm only making the point.
Yes, okay. We've been there, yes. But that's, our point with the benches is we'd like to have four of them fixed by September Fest. You have the, two on the entranceway, and two on the walkway. Those four would be nice.
With the new cedar that you're talking about.
With the new cedar that you're talking about.
That's what I'm looking at. So I was, I was gonna jump the gun. I don't know. What do you think Suzanne?
Talk to him.
Comment.
Talk to, talk to Greg.
So it's a matter of getting those four into, into your schedule. Now, I did find the, the twelve footers in stock at one store. So, something I can, you know, and they were only thirty dollars for one twelve footer. Which we, that's only fifteen dollars for one board times five. Big difference. And it's later, theater. And there's a little work to be done by the park, I mean, the maintenance guys. So it's a matter of getting those four done by September Fest, September Fest.
Home Force has the oil and chip program the first week of September. After that, it'll be in the park.
That's why I said, see, see Greg? See Greg is in charge of the schedule.
Right.
He, he will handle the schedule and, and make things happen.
Good.
And I agree, they should be done before September Fest.
Right.
Especially the ones at the entrance.
Right, so.
I mean, that's, that's so visible when you walk in.
That's happened last September.
Yes.
It didn't look good.
Yeah.
Anyway. Okay, so would you like me to move forward and buy the material for those four benches in cedar?
I think you should.
I don't know. Yeah. We need to make a motion. I'll make a motion, but I don't, I just think you should just do it.
Yeah.
If you want, if you don't need to make a motion, just work with Greg.
Okay.
Get it done.
Yeah, I know, I mean, there's such the, there's such a difference between the plastic and the wood, but, you know. That's a pro and con, you know, fixing it up.
Think about that next term.
Yeah. Okay, let's, let's move forward on the floor. Get that done. Okay, that's what I have. You got a hand up?
Frank? Push them in their ten-thirty Allentown route. The plastic seating on hot days, are they easy to sit on versus the wood? Are they very uncomfortable?
I can, I asked that question.
Yeah, you did.
And Kelly's, Kelly, who did her research on this, said that the manufacturer says they're not as hot as wood.
Or as hot as Trex.
Cause I, cause I know that Trex is very, very hot. You can't walk on that, on a deck with your breath deep in the, in the sun.
Right.
So they assured us that they were not as hot.
Right.
But I, I can't say I've never sat on it.
No.
I've never seen it, actually.
Yeah. Neither have I.
But I am concerned about the sag of, with the weight. If two people would sit side by side on the bench, what would you do? You know, that would be important.
That was, of course, then you can, you can always change a six-foot bench to a five-foot bench and put a support and that's, but that's more work.
Yeah.
A strap, a metal strap, is what I'm saying. Okay, that's what I have for Park and Rec.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to, so the Park and Rec? Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay, comprehensive plan committee. John?
We're coming to the final stages. We have a visual draft copy. The group is reviewing that and we'll be going through that in detail at the next meeting in the thirty-fourth. Invite everybody to come.
Good.
Good.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have none.
All right. Police chief report? I don't see Chief Blake here, but.
Hi folks, how are we tonight? I'm standing in.
How are you, Tim?
I'm doing well, thank you very much.
Good.
I have the August two thousand eighteen list of the monthly activities for Pembroke Regional Police Department for the month of July. Pembroke Regional Police Department responded to four hundred and sixty-eight calls for service. Of those calls, a hundred and eighty-two were in East Rock Hill and two hundred and eighty-six were in West Rock Hill. The department handled thirty-six traffic crashes. There were sixteen crashes in East Rock Hill and twenty in West Rock Hill. Fifteen were reportable crashes and twenty-one were non-reportable crashes. Under the criminal activity, the Pembroke Regional Police Officers responded to seven Part One crimes and thirty-nine Part Two crimes in July, totaling forty-six crimes. Part One crimes are also known as index crimes or violent crimes. These are crimes such as homicide, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, theft, auto theft, and arson. West Rock Hill, there were four theft cases, three cases of criminal mischief, one case of involuntary deviant sexual intercourse, four cases of trespassing, one terroristic threat, one recklessly endangerment, one authorized use of an automobile. We had five DUIs in West Rock Hill, two dog law violations, and two ordinance violations. Criminal charges that were filed for July, there were three disorderly conducts, one identity theft, one recklessly endangerment, one confinement of dogs, one receiving stolen property, one underage drinking, four DUIs, and one possession of drug paraphernalia. Under the other police activities section, officers conducted two hundred and seventy-five traffic enforcement details, thirty-seven of those being on Old Bethlehem Pike specifically. Officers issued fifteen verbal traffic warnings, twenty-four citations, and sixty-four written warnings. They also conducted a hundred and seventy business checks. First day of school for Upper Bucks Christian School and Faith Christian Academy is scheduled for August twenty-seventh. And Pembroke School District begins on September the fourth. Under administrative activities, Chief Blake attended a meeting at the Bucks County Intermediate Unit with the Bucks County School District Superintendents and all Bucks County Police Chiefs. That's the end of the report for August two thousand eighteen.
Any questions?
Yep. Group for proof.
I'll second it. All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too, night. Be safe.
Joint Rec Authority for Holiday House Pool, there's not a whole lot to report. We've got about three weeks left in the year. We've had some very successful bingo games this year. A lot of local businesses stepped up and gave us donations for the bingo winners. We had free haircuts and we had lots of coupons and all kinds of toys and candy and all kinds of stuff that we were able to give the kids. So, not only the kids, the adults. The adults were happier than the kids were. So that went real well. Got a lot of use now of our bocce ball and ping pong. I see a lot in the beanbag toss that Suzanne put out there. A lot, a lot of people using that stuff every day. So, people, people got tired of just coming to the pool, sit at the pool. They wanted to do other things. I think that was very successful. So, I'm glad that, I mean, we've had a lot of good comments about it too. About the fact that there are other activities there now. So, that's good. Aside from that, just really.
The financial results are there.
The financial results?
Are there, is it?
Oh, yeah?
We're making money.
Yeah, yeah, and we're making money. Yeah. So that's good.
Many, many years.
I know. So I think that's good. Yeah, we're, we're actually a lot better off than we were last year. And last year, we were better off than the year before. So, so I think it's all, all coming through. Looks pretty good. So, any questions?
I have none. Group for approval.
I'll second. Any all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Tax collectors report.
Okay. For the month of August, so far I've collected an annual taxes, two thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars fifty-eight cents. Two thousand eighteen intervals, twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents. That's all I've collected for this month. However, I just wanna make sure everyone is aware that school tax bill discount period is over August the thirty-first. And the tax office does have extra hours for the last two weeks of discount. And they are on my tax bills. So I've got every day of the week covered for extra hours.
Okay.
Great. That's it.
Questions?
Nope, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Engineering report? Steve?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see, I have nothing formal on the report. I can, I can report to you though that the overlay paving portion of our paving program was completed. I was on Whalen Catch Basin Road where we filled in that gap and up on Cedar Hollow Road. And that actually came in a little under our bid price. So, that worked out well. And as Greg indicated, the second half of that project will be the oil and chip and solar reseal and developments. That should start sometime in September.
Okay. Good enough. Questions?
Nope. I'll make a motion with proof.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, solicitors report.
Yes, the second and third items under the solicitors' report are not going to be considered by the boards tonight. They're not ready for you. So they will be on your agenda for the next month, which only leaves the Butter Creek Plan Amendment, which would also be tabled because we do not have a signed agreement at this point. But I think that Mr. Snyder wants to talk to you about his agreement.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Going back to the agreement, I think the latest holdup, if I understand it correctly, Mary, is the, you, you put a paragraph in there. The developer shall work diligently to secure approval of the proposed four-lot plan. If the developer fail, fails to secure the conditional approval of the proposed four-lot plan within a hundred and eighty days of the day of signing of this agreement, the plan will be deemed withdrawn and become null and void. Now, that came about from an email from you. We started with about, on June twenty-eighth, we started with this, this agreement. And I talked to, I called Mary a couple of times, but I wound up talking to an attorney and he was handling this. And here's an email from my attorney to Mary. Are you working tomorrow? Here's a four-lot plan, four-unit plan. Tim would like to start the house with an agreement that we will file an amended plan. The four-lot plan, within ninety days, if he does not, the thirteen-lot plan is moot. Mary's response, okay with me. I talked to Greg, it's okay with him. I'll have to do the agreement. I'm booked until tomorrow, off till, off till Thursday. The agreement will take about a week. Now, this was in June. We did get the agreement, it was the end of July, which is a month. But that, we worked everything out, I thought, or my attorney worked everything out with Mary. And further forward, Mary sent the agreement over at the end of, at the end of July. And there were some issues that I had with the agreement, some things that we had talked about, which I thought that email explained pretty clearly that Mary and Greg were okay with a building permit being issued while the subdivision was done. The agreement came over to me and it said, no building permit will be issued until the four-lot is reported. So I called, tried to get ahold of Mary, but she was on vacation. And, well, we went back and forth with my attorney and Mary, he responded. So here's an email to Mary from me on August fourth. Hi, Mary, with John's help, I am sending over a copy of the revised agreement with our provisions in red. Please let me know if these changes are acceptable to you and the township. If these changes work for you, Brendan and I are ready to sign the agreement, sign and notarize the agreement so that we can move forward on building hope. Mary's response, I'm fine with John's changes, but I'm having problems sending documents from my computer. I'm sure this problem will be resolved by Monday. Tanya, when you get in, please accept the changes in John's version of the document, save it, and send Tim a version that he can just print out and sign. Tim, we will need three fully executed originals of the agreement. I did that. Executed it, printed it out, executed it. Then Mary came back August sixth. No, I'm sorry, this is one that was sent over to me, August sixth. We got it to Mary. August eighth, from Mary to me and my attorney. I have the agreement signed by Tim. One question we need to answer before this goes to BOS. What happens if the four-lot plan is submitted by Tim but does not comply with the provisions of SALDO? And the BOS cannot approve it? Perhaps the agreement should say submission of a four-lot plan which complies with provisions of SALDO. So we went from a four-lot plan that complies with the provisions of SALDO to the developer has to get done within a hundred and eighty days. That's where my issue is with this thing. And no offense to Mary, but this, this has taken too much just to get this letter done. And it's not her fault, it's all the back and forth. My first subdivision was three and a half years to get done. My second one was almost two years to get done. I can't, I don't know how long the county's gonna take to approve everything. I don't know how long the board's gonna take. I get stuck in a hundred and eighty-day period. And at the end, it says my, my plan is no good unless the township extends it.
How long do you think you'd be comfortable with to get your plan approved?
Well, I would be comfortable with, I, we entered into an agreement with you and with the township. We, we negotiated the agreement.
Can I ask a question quick?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize for the, I'm, but I'm, I'm kinda like a little bit confused. In the sense that I never saw this four-lot subdivision plan come in front of the planning commission yet.
Because I was told to negotiate this whole thing with Mary. I have a copy of the plan.
I, I wrote that.
And I was gonna, but I am trying to get the building permit. I have fifty-four acres almost.
I, I understand that.
We're trying to get the building permit.
And you had, you had originally, like, years ago, you had thirteen lot approved.
A thirteen lot approved subdivision.
But now, now, but that, you're not building the four houses on that thirteen lots?
It will total the thirteen lots instead of, instead of being thirteen, I'm, it's gonna be four. Now, I'm, I'm trying to make it into four lots.
Are they, are they the same places that the, some of those houses were? Or are they completely?
No.
Completely?
All the houses fit. And I can show you the plan, all the houses fit right on, he's just, my engineer has just taken them from where they were before and they're, they're back on, right on the same spot. All the lots, there's one two-acre lot, which was approved at the beginning. And there's a thirteen-acre lot, a twenty-nine-acre lot, and a ten-acre lot. All large, the homes are all where they were on that thirteen lot, they're there. We've eliminated the road. They all take driveway access to Camp Rock Hill Road. I will have two, one, one lot that fronts on Camp Rock Hill, which is the two-acre lot. And again, if you wanna look at the plans, I'm more than happy to show them. I got two flag lots, and then there's one lot that fronts on Butter Creek Road.
Do you have the plans with you?
Yes. Yes.
I think that would be helpful, because I think talking about this in the background is not gonna give you guys any idea what's going on.
I agree, and that's why I brought them. What do you want me to, do you want me to show them?
I would roll them right in the middle of the gym and that way both boards.
If I remember.
That's not the plan you gave me.
This is, it's the exact plan I sent over to you.
I'm looking at the exact plan you sent over to me.
I drew four lots on it.
Well, I'm not saying either there aren't four lots, but this is the plan you sent me. And it's got this big pealoo, and...
No, that was done over, that's the original plan. This was just drawn over top of the original plan.
Well, there was no street in the one that was drawn over top of the original plan. Everybody was taking dry dunes.
This is just a driveway, Mary, it's not a street. That's the existing driveway now. What's on there is existing. That whole driveway is existing. This used to be the camp. I just took the, we just took the thirteen lots off. This house is exactly where it was on that plan. The septic system is all where it was. The only change is where I wanted to build this house. And that's what started all this. This house crossed a couple lots on the thirteen lot plan, so we decided to go this direction. This lot is exactly where it was. This lot out front here was approved on that plan. This lot, and that's it. There's only three. Right now, I have one lot I'm looking to add, change it into four.
I'm, I'm looking at the, and I'm not, and it's not that I'm trying to argue with you or this isn't even that important, but one of the questions you asked him is whether the lots, like, so lot one, two, and three became one. I just want you to see this. This is one lot. This is one of the four lots. It crosses, see how it crosses?
Yeah, you're not, you're not in the, see, that's what I was, I asked the question, whether you were in the same footprint of the lots.
So we're just not combining lots one, two, and three?
You're not in the same footprint. You changed, you changed the footprint and this new four lot subdivision.
I changed the lot, when you say footprint, you mean lot lines? Well, yeah, I have thirteen lots, thirteen lots, so I'm gonna have to reduce.
But you didn't combine lot one, two, and three as a lot. And you didn't combine lot four, five, and six as another lot, right?
No, not that I know of, I don't know how it washed out.
This is, this is, this is the lot lines drawn in over.
Okay. So here, you cross a couple different, like, three.
Three.
Cross three lines. Yeah, okay.
Well, we were trying to, like, believe it or not, we're not the awful people. We were trying to find a way to give him some relief. He's going from thirteen lots to four lots, that's a good thing for the township. So the fact that he wants to go from thirteen lots to four lots in an area of the township that we think is environmentally sensitive and we wanna see less development, like, let's try and work with him and see if we can find a speedier process so that he can build the house he wants to build and get a four lot subdivision without torturing him. I won't make that mistake again. So, we, he's had two attorneys during this six week process that we're talking about. And his first attorney and I worked out something conceptual. The proof is in the pudding, and the devil's in the details, as they say when you draw up a contract. So, what it called for, what the contract wound up that he signed was that he'll get his building permit right away, and he's required to submit this four lot subdivision within X number of period of time. I forgot what it was. But I was talking to Greg and to Steve preparing for the meeting, and Steve said, you know, there might be some issues with the lines he drew on that plan. And I'm thinking, gee, suppose the guy submits the plan and never moves it? Suppose the guy submits the plan, can't get approval, but what happens then? Then we're just hanging out there in limbo with the, 'cause the thirteen lot subdivision doesn't go away under the changes that his attorney, that John Delivini made to the agreement. The fourteen, the thirteen lot plan doesn't go away until he gets approval of the four lot plan. So that left a gap in the agreement that was not in my original agreement. So, I wrote, and this was after he signed it, admittedly. But I wrote to John Delivini and said, what about, and he wrote the email, and then there were some phone conversations that you didn't hear, where John and I talked. And, you know, I said, suppose we say that it complies with the subdivision ordinance. And John said, what plan have you ever seen that complies with subdivision ordinance? There's always waivers and things like that, that's like an unfair burden. And I said, well, how about if we say that he gets approval within, you know, say, six months arbitrarily? And he said he would talk to Tim about that, and that's where everything ended.
But as far as the compliance with, with SALDO, it is already in the, I'm no attorney, obviously, but it's already in the signed agreement, because on, I think, number fourteen, it says, in paragraph fourteen, it says that I agree to comply with every state, federal, local, and township ordinance. Well, SALDO is a township ordinance.
Yeah, we wouldn't get anywhere if we tried to enforce that provision in the situation, in the circumstance that, that we're describing here, where you would file the plan and not move it forward. I couldn't go to court and tell it, just look, it said it complies with all state, federal regulations. That wouldn't work, so, no.
Seems we have the cart before the horse here.
Well, perhaps.
I mean, just, we have a process that we go through. And the process is if they wanna do something, they submit to the planning commission. And the planning commission evaluates it. They specialize in evaluating that role of the ordinances. Here we are in part of the super, the board, making a decision without any input from the planning commission. And I think that's wrong.
Okay, and that's, that is a fair comment. There are times when people have come in with amended final plans. And you've allowed them to just proceed in front of the board, but there are also probably more times when people have come in with amended final approvals, and you've made them go back to the planning commission. So, that's a very fair comment.
I'm not looking for approval on the plan. All we're looking for is to be able to build a house while we are, a building permit, while we are going through this process, 'cause it is a legitimate lot. Now, if you wanna make it that it can be no more than four lots, I mean, let's, I mean, Steve, it's fifty-four acres almost, let's face facts. I could definitely get two. Two would comply probably to everything. Three would easily comply, 'cause I got one at the road and I got two flag lots. Three would comply. Four was what we were looking to go for, 'cause we have three boys. Not that that really means anything, will they live there the rest of their lives? I don't know. Will I sell them all tomorrow? I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that that's exactly what they're for. I am gonna sit here, and Mary can attest to this, 'cause in our first conversation, I told her I wanted to be planted on that property. I don't have any, I don't have, very, I don't have any reason.
Is the request here to get a permit prior to land development approval?
Yeah, let's just...
I don't have any plans on moving. Now, I could go tomorrow, you know, so that, that's a moot point. But I don't think it's a, I don't understand why it's such a stretch. I'm not asking you to trust me. Technically, and, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but technically, if I put the house across two lot lines on that thirteen lot subdivision, the thirteen lot subdivision is no good at that point in time, because it either has to be changed or altered at that point in time. We crossed that bridge. Then, if I, if I can find a thirteen lot plan that fits into the township ordinances within reason requesting the waivers that I needed, certainly a four lot plan should, I can't even see why it needs as many waivers as the thirteen lot.
We still have to record them.
I agree.
We have a process, and you need to go through that process.
And I'm not stopping that. I'm not disputing that. I'm going through the whole process. I, I signed the agreement saying I would go through the whole process. The only thing I'm here for is to say, and, and I negotiated with Mary and Greg in, in good, now, wait a minute. None of those emails say to Mary.
Just to be clear, I've never had a conversation with Mr. Snyder, I've always dealt with his attorneys.
We had the first conversation, Mary. You called, you called me up.
And told you that I could only talk to your attorney?
No, we had fifty minutes on the phone. My, my...
It's understandable. This is an exception. We make an exception. Everybody can want it to be. We have a standard process, you need to follow that process.
But then some, two months, we've been going at this whole process. And I've been negotiating, 'cause I understood that Mary and Greg, I was negotiating good faith. Nobody said to me, hey, go to the board and let's get this through the board. And Mary, we had a fifty minute, I have the bill for it. We had a conversation, but...
I think I, I mean, we, we understand what you're saying. But I think that this needs to go to the planning commission. I really do. This four lot subdivision has to go to the planning commission with the houses on it and to have them come back to us the following month, recommended or not. But in my mind, that's, that's what I think.
So we need a new plot plan.
We have to, otherwise...
What does that mean? What's the difference, why can't the house be built?
We have one now, it's thirteen properties are approved.
No, I understand, I understand that, but why can't the house be built on one lot? It is one lot.
Can I come in with a plot plan for that?
I did, they have a plot plan.
Wait, timeout, timeout, timeout. From the beginning of time, and yes, now I'm remembering, we did have a conversation. If Mr. Snyder wants to, like, make null and void the thirteen lot plan, he can get a building permit very, very quickly and then come in with his four lot plan to the planning commission. That has always been an option that's been available to them. We've always talked about that.
There was no problem with that except for as I, then I wouldn't have spent the time and money on this disagreement. And two months, putting this agreement together, I wouldn't have been going back and forth with Mary. If that's how it was set up, to me, cut and dry, Tim, you have to go to the board or we can't do it, or you have to, you have to withdraw the whole thing. In our conversation, I was let, Mary had said to me, withdrawn, I don't suggest you withdraw the whole thing. Let, it can be revised. I understand it's gotta go through the planning commission, I understand it's gotta go through, we, we understand all that. What, what is the diff, and, and, all right, I'll go the other way. You said to me, if, if, you said in a hundred and eighty days, it's okay, it's okay if I only do a hundred, if I give you a hundred and eighty, or you only give me a hundred and eighty days. Well, what's the difference in timeframe then? If it's okay to put the house on and restrict me to a hundred and eighty day time period, and you said, what is okay with me? Well, if I say a year, are you okay with it? My point is, you were willing to give me a, you wrote the agreement up and you were willing to give me a permit
You talked about it.
Based on a hundred and eighty degree, a hundred and eighty days, but now you're not willing to give me a permit at all?
Timeout, again. We, and I will never do this again, I'm very sorry. We were trying to find something that we could bring to the board that would represent less aggravation, less time, get you the permits you need, get you approval for a four lot subdivision more quickly than you would've gotten it conventionally. You would still have gone to the planning commission, there'd still have to be a review of the four lot plan process. We were trying to find a way, and that way would've been to sign an agreement saying that, I'm gonna submit a four lot subdivision plan, I'll get a building permit now, I'll get my four lot subdivision plan in within the next ninety days. The thing that it all broke down at was I wanted the four lot plan to be approved within six months so that he couldn't file it and just let it sit there. And that's where the whole thing broke down. And so, we would've come to you with that agreement, and then he would've filed the four lot subdivision plan within the next couple of months and moved through the planning commission and done all of those things. We were just trying to find a way to not be difficult government bureaucrats. That was a mistake.
And I think there's some technical benefits to revising the old plan and to starting new under all the current regulations.
The current, 'cause the regulations today are not the same as they were.
But now, there is no signed agreement. So there's only one option for Mr. Snyder if he wants a building permit quickly, and that's to make null and void the thirteen lot plan and to start over again. And I'm okay with that, that's the proper way of doing it. It's the right way of doing it, and that's all we have to offer you tonight.
So we're going back on every, basically, everything that I, has been talked about, is we're going back on?
You just want a permit?
That was your choice.
No, it wasn't, Mary. Our first conversation was, was just exactly that. I didn't wanna go through this again. Three and a half years to get the first subdivision done. Now, I just, I don't have a problem with timeframe.
It's hard for the board when you talk to them.
I don't have a problem with timeframe, I have a problem with, it seems unrealistic. Like I said, two months to get that agreement written up. It took two, and all this was done, again, we've done this in good faith. It has cost thousands of dollars just to get that piece of paper written up. And now you guys are saying, no? You guys are saying that means nothing? I acted in good faith, we acted in good faith, we spent a lot of money. I have the emails. Mary never once said in any of those emails, hey, you gotta go before the board first. Greg never once said, I met with Greg several times, he's, Mary's handling.
I was talking to your attorneys, they know the process, they know the law. They know that nothing the solicitor signs finds the board, everything goes before the board.
Well, we're not getting anywhere here tonight, okay? We're not. I mean, this conversation really hasn't gone on long enough, because I don't, you're not swaying me to where we should be giving you a building permit right now. And I don't know about you. I, I think there's a process in place that, that we need to follow that process.
I'm not asked before, I didn't, I didn't start this, I didn't ask for this. I was more than happy to go down, I was gonna go down to one because of, because of this. But this, this is wrong. This is absolutely wrong. I did everything in good faith, I operated in good faith, and this is how I'm supposed to go, Greg?
Tim, you say you did, 'cause I, 'cause I'm kinda, I'm on the side, and I am reasoning or trying to reason with you. But if you are, why don't you null and void the thirteen acre, why don't you null and void the thirteen lot subdivision? Get your permit and bring that in front of the planning commission.
I am willing to, I, what this, how this all started, and whether Mary says, if Mary agrees to this or not, how this all started was, if you, if you leave the thirteen lots in place, it will be easier and you won't have to start new.
Well, because you had an approved plan already.
Yes.
That's why.
Which, so I'm just revising. It was a revision to an approved plan, and that's what she said I would have to do.
And that's what the township staff was trying to do, was trying to speed this along by just doing an amended plan and then filing whole new sets of plans in two thousand and eighteen.
Wow, bless you.
And so what we tried to do is get an agreement to say, this is just an amended plan, not a new submission. If he walks away and he reverts the thirteen lot subdivision, he has to come in with a brand new plan and comply with the day's rules, instead of doing an amended, which would've made it easier. And that's what the township staff was trying to do.
The township has my agreement. The township has the notarized agreement. So why is it now, all of a sudden, because of the hundred and eighty days? Do you, is that, is that a realistic period of time? That's what I, I don't...
The chairman has said we're not gonna discuss this anymore.
We're not discussing it anymore tonight, okay? Thank you. We had not heard about this before, so, Mary, do you have anything else?
No, do you want me to have anything else?
No, that's fine, thank you. Can I have a, I'll make a motion.
We approve the report, I assume.
Second, all second, all in favor? All right, okay. Managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the treasurer's report, ending July thirty first, two thousand and eighteen. I'll go over the funds. General fund, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Highway eight, two eighty, two fifty-two, ten. Open space, one million, sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-four cents. Park fund, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-six cents. Equipment fund, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents. Highway capital, one hundred and twenty-five fifty-six. Street lighting, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. The reserve funds, the general fund reserve, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Open space, Manderfield, fifty thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Sewerage maintenance fund, hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. The stormwater fund, six thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And the Esper funds, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Also hundreds of...
Okay, can I get a motion to... Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, whole business. I have one item of whole business and there was a discussion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I apologize.
You have a list of things tonight.
Yeah.
The next item...
All right. Wow, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The next item is, I have a resolution in front, in front of the board, it was a draft. It was, be it resolved that the board of supervisors of West Rock Hill Township has established fine rules for meeting attendance for all township committee members. Failure to attend either three consecutive regular scheduled meetings or four regularly scheduled meetings during a twelve month period shall constitute neglecting the performance of their duties as committee members. Members may therefore be removed by the board supervisors, whether or without recommendation of the majority of the subject committee members for malfeasance or neglect or the performance of their duties.
I am in favor of this because the word, the word "may" comes before the word. I think, I think it is...
I was gonna, I was gonna add, the exact same.
Yeah, yeah. It is, it is not our responsibility to just prematurely remove a volunteer from a committee. It is our responsibility to decide with a recommendation from a committee if that person needs to be removed. And we are, we rely on the committees to come up and tell us that, okay? We had a situation with the park and rec where this came up, and, and we really need a policy in place that's gonna handle this.
I think it should be across the board for the committees.
I do too.
All committees. All committees.
So I would make a recommendation, I will, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
And you'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item is, I'm looking for authorization from the board of supervisors to evict two of our tenants that are behind that one.
Sure.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is, the township's looking to authorization from the board of supervisors for auditing services. There's a memo in your packet that our current auditors are no longer providing that service.
No?
Yes, so we have to find another auditor's firm.
Okay.
So I need a motion to...
I'll make that motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is, in July, the PFC contamination to replenish area hearing was held here in the township building. Residents from East and West Rock Hill Township were here, as long, along with Purcell City Regional Authority. There was discussions on how to provide a temporary, can be a response, an interim response to the contamination. The two biggest ways to fix the problem were to run public water with mandatory connections or to do filtration systems with carbon filters on each one. There was a lot of discussion. I did not know if the board had a position that they wanted to send to DDP. All correspondence must be to DDP by August thirty first.
Can I ask you if you've had input or conversations with citizens?
Yes, there is an email in your packet from one citizen.
From one citizen?
From one citizen.
Now, this area, we're talking about how many properties?
We're probably tall. East and West Rock... We're probably tall, east and west Rock Hill.
Where this problem arises?
Probably 200.
Wow.
All those dogs. Mainly in East Rock Hill. There's more in East Rock Hill than there is in West Rock Hill.
Who's gonna pay for that?
DEP. For the connections. And where the, where the carbon filters.
But the homeowners will have to pay for the connection to their house.
That has to be, they'll have to pay for a water bill.
Waterway, okay.
And if they do the carbon filters, DEP will pay for one or two years, and then after that, the responsibility will be on the homeowners.
Wow.
And with the filters, the, there's no guarantee. Plus, there's a statement has to go on the deeds of property that's contended, so, you know, that puts the value of the property.
Right, yeah. Mostly the current equipment doesn't even go on the unit. Filters aren't as clocked or.
Mine needs to change.
And Don and I both intended that being, it was enlightening.
Anybody in the audience regarding this matter here that have any issue with this?
Where is, where is it, where's the road, where are the roads at?
Tabor Road and Old Buckland Pike.
Oh.
Okay.
That's where it is now. Contaminated wells, right? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And we're taking public comment.
I'm sorry, yeah, we're not taking public comment right now. I, I think, I mean, I think, I think the option is, if you have public comment, you can raise your hand at this point.
Not about this subject.
No, we're not, we're talking about this.
That subject.
Okay, okay, all right. I think the responsible issue is to run up, run the water and have the DEP pay for. I mean, that's, that's my take.
Agreed. They need public water, they, 'cause they don't know what condition their wells are.
And we have no idea. Yeah, and we never, we don't know what the accident was caused to. I mean, it could easily contaminate a lot more wells down.
If they have a good well, you might go there tomorrow.
Yeah, right.
Okay. The next item that I have, the last item, is there's a letter in your packet from Dennis Slosser saying that he is resigning from zoning hearing. You have two alternates, settle the zoning hearing waters.
Still.
Can operate like a actual member.
We'll have to think about that.
Actually, I just table that for now.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Thanks for that, please.
Do you want me to advertise, or do you want to?
I, I, what our, our normal procedure is to, or, do you want?
I think we were discussing before we advertised.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Now you're done.
Now I'm done.
Now I'll make a motion to settle managers' report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Old business, I was getting ready to say, there was, there was an item last month about giving our annual donation to the Penrith Community Center, and Don had asked for additional information about how much all the municipalities in the area were giving. Don has not yet received that information, so I'm going to continue to table this until, until Don gets the information he's looking for. Thank you. I have no other old business here. I have other questions.
I have, I have one thing I wanna bring up. The updating on Penn dot roads. Greg, we have, we would have notified that they're gonna be doing something with cattle roads in the upcoming future?
In the future, yes.
Yes. Do we have a date yet?
Not yet.
2019?
I, I think so. We don't, I'm hoping on that a couple of.
We're working hard on trying to get that, that nailed down, yes, because we have a lot of water issues, especially in the wintertime up there through where Bears Street Services, you know, that, all that water comes down off the hills from the driveways and runs right onto the road and then breezes and clogs up the ditches. So we're working hard on that, on getting that done. Other than that, Penn dot is, did they come back to you, I saw an email or something regarding, uh, Finsland Road?
They, they came back to me on Finsland Road and said they're going to look into it, and I got, I got a letter back from Representative Stats also, saying that he would keep an eye on it and help us get it. The issue out there is the total number of accidents we've been having. People coming down Finsland Road to Allentown Road, and there's been, I forget, seven in like two months or something. It's terrible, and a lot of them are not reported, and that's a problem. The police gave us a list of all the, of all the accidents they had reported, but the number's probably three times what they have. So Penn dot is looking into it. We just asked them to put up some signage or something to, to really try and slow down the traffic and make people aware that they're about to come into that short distance.
Were you able to secure a visit from Stats or anyone?
Not yet, not yet. I'll go back out, yeah.
All right. I think we should stand up then.
Yeah, I do too. That's a very dangerous area.
It is. My concern is the proper maintenance of that roadway from Penn dot itself and the, and the way the ditches are not kept clean. There's tons and tons of debris in those ditches, if you see that. And I don't, I don't understand. Well, I do understand, but you gotta make noise.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
That's the only thing we have.
I'll go back out again.
Old business.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, new business?
I don't know.
Okay, public comment? Yes?
Robert Linden, Reagan Drive. Are you aware that the, there's a bill in front of the Pennsylvania House that is going to deal with fifth-generation cellphone, and it's going to supersede your authority in regulating where antennas are placed?
You're talking about the antennas, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We are well aware of that, yeah. That's been brought up at PSATs and at Cato, at the local box camp.
It's an attack from a two-pronged, from, you got that lawsuit that's going on in the courts and the House bill that's pending, and the state organization is fighting, very active in its fight against it.
County very much aware.
Right.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Tom Kuchay, 2950 Rich Hill Road. Again, I wanna talk about this crime that has been committed in your township called the Quaker Town Compressor Station. Now, the reason why I'm, I'm calling it a crime is because unless you can tell me otherwise, they're breaking every single one of you zoning regulations and getting away with it. Now, I have a bigger problem than that, and that is, but you not doing anything, you are legitimizing their position when they go for final approval to all the other agencies. All they have to say is, "It was okay with the township, it must be okay." And at this point, I don't think you're doing anything, even though you have an obligation to protect the welfare and safety of your residents, and you are not doing that. You're totally ignoring this thing, and by doing so, you're hurting our cause even further because you're legitimating, you're legitimizing their position, their criminality actually. And that's all I have to say.
Well, okay, thank you. We, we are.
Is that public comment? Did you make a public comment?
Yeah. Okay, was there a question in the back?
Christine Shelley, 50 Wayland Road. I would like to request that an ordinance be written regarding the compressor station before they get approval or not. I request that the township write an ordinance regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Yes, hi, Rose Mark in Rich Hill Road, and I also feel very strong about the compressor station, that it is a safe, huge safety hazard and health hazard to our surrounding community, including not just West Rock Hill, but also Richland. A lot more, probably more residents in Richland will be affected because of the large housing developments. And now we come to find out that recently, that on the other side, but that will be placed right on our property line, by the way, that's what they're proposing, Adelphia. And we would like to know, 'cause we haven't had any contact or communication lately from our township, about whether or not you've received any environmental impact statements from DEP or EPA regarding this. They were supposed to go out to visit the site and do a study about the air quality impact, you know, with emissions and such from this thing, and also environmental. So that's, that's a very, that's a big question that we have about that as well. And we come to find out also, on the other side of our property line will now be placed, trying to be placed, 230 houses, residences. And I bet you a dime to a dollar that those poor innocent people that those houses are being sold to know nothing about the monstrosity on the other side, less than 1,000 feet away.
Well, please, one, one topic at a time, please.
That's a big concern.
Okay, thank you.
No, and it's a moral issue as well, when people knowingly are constructing and evading a hazardous, safety hazard and health hazard to their community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There has been some activity there. I know that you don't think township's doing anything, but township has been talking with Adelphia. They came up with a proposal, not a proposal, but they have said that they cut the size of the building down to 35 feet from 50. We haven't seen a new plan yet, but we're waiting, Greg is waiting to get plans, because they owe us a whole set of plans and we haven't gotten those plans yet.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the compressor station?
Yes, yes, sort of. They've also asked FERC for a staging area that are not included in the wetlands, and there is no area around there, so we're trying to figure out what they expect to find when they, because they can't build unless they can find a staging area, okay? So that's, that's a setback for them, actually.
A wet area, too?
A staging area. A staging area that's not in wetlands, yeah, for all their construction and everything. So that's, that's also in discussion that we're having with them. I think, was there anything else that you wanted to bring out as far as?
When I've spoken to them, they're supposed to be in contact with the residents to have meetings with them to answer their questions.
Right, and they've said.
And they have not, they were supposed to copy me on the letter when they send the letter out, they have not sent the letter.
So there's a lot of things yet that have not occurred, so, but we are, we are involved with them, okay?
I, I am concerned because they still.
I'm sorry, you, you need to stand up and acknowledge who you are each time.
Tom Kuchay.
Tom Kuchay again. My concern is that even though they would bring down the height of the, which it would be great, the height of the building to the 35 feet that maximum allowed in the township, there are, all your other regulations are being violated, all of them.
There's a lot of issues that are being worked right now, so let's just.
And, well, on that side, it shouldn't even be an issue, because they have three different gas companies on one and a half acre. They already have two existing.
Month ago, we had to ordeal with the fireworks on Thousand Acre Road, and it has escalated. Some more neighbors have been putting fireworks off. We have called the police department, they have come out. What is the township having any thoughts or what is going to be done about it?
If I can, I'm hearing this same complaint at every township meeting I go to, that this is not something that's unique to West Rock Hill Township. It's being experienced in densely populated communities, suburban communities, and rural communities alike. Everybody's like feeling the same pain. And I'll tell you the same thing the police chiefs and the solicitors in every township tell people is that the state legislature passed the law. They expanded the definition of what a personal firework was, and the municipalities cannot enact regulations that are stricter than the state regulations. So other than having the police department be vigilant, which they are, your police departments work very hard to educate themselves on what type of fireworks are personal and which are display, which are the two categories, there's nothing that the township can offer you. The state tells us where we can regulate and where we can't, and this is one of the areas where we cannot regulate.
So basically, we just live with it.
When you hear fireworks, the police department has said, "Call us, we'll come out, we'll, we'll try our best to determine whether the fireworks comply with the state law and don't comply with the state law," so I wouldn't say that's not done.
Well, it just, it just seems like, you know, it just, just keep, it's just gotten more and more and more, the neighbors are doing it. And, you know, to me, it's, the, he just turned into a mountain. And us neighbors, not only on Thousand Acre Road, but also on Allentown Road, Lower Rockford Dale and Upper Rocky Dale, have came to the meetings and complained about it, and like you said, it seems like, you know, there's nothing we can do. All right, we call the police, the police come out, they sit there for 10, 15 minutes, the fireworks stop. Damage is done. And it's like I've, I've said before, my wife had to tranquilize our horse twice, and then we stood out there for three hours, holding the horse, so it wouldn't bust out of the fence, cause an accident or possibly kill somebody. Now, I have to put up with that, and the rest of the neighbors? I, I don't feel it's right. Okay, thank you. Other comments? Yes?
My name is Shirley Mann, I live at 2945 Rich Hill Road. I live almost directly across from the road and the pipeline station. I have lived there for over 55 years. I like my quiet country lifestyle in West Rock Hill. As far as this compressor station goes, I got, and I'm sure all the neighbors did, lots of information from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and in there it says, "If the electric motor-driven compressors, they are very clean and they emit no particular matter or pollutants, but the natural gas-fired engines and turbines burn a portion of the natural gas in the pipeline, and they would emit pollutants, which is gonna end up giving us health problems, lung, cancer, whoever knows what." Also, the noise. Last August, August of 2017, they worked on that station around the clock for at least three weeks. There was a period of 24 to 48 hours where the noise from that was deafening, and I am not exaggerating. People from a mile away came past my house wondering what's happening. I had phone calls, "What's this noise?" It was awful. The only good thing that came out of it was my squirrels all disappeared for months. They weren't in my bird feeders. But it was awful, horrible. You couldn't sleep, you couldn't think, you couldn't do anything. And then also in this booklet, it says about the vibration. It says, "This is similar to what happens when noise from a speaker causes the floor to shake, or when a helicopter flying overhead causes a window to rattle." Just what we need, floors rattling and windows rattling. It's awful. It's not a good thing for West Rock Hill, absolutely not. I can't believe that something can't be done when this has so many things against it. I'm just hoping you supervisors can get something done. At the end of last month's meeting, I think it was you, Mr. Miller, mentioned about getting Adelphia here to speak with us, and then Judy said it'd be a great idea, you said too, is, so you are trying to do that, or?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Adelphia has agreed to meet with the PDOT with.
Oh, thank goodness.
Yeah, and they said they were gonna send out letters, but they haven't done it yet.
No, they haven't. I haven't, I live directly across the road from them, and I have nothing received in the mail. I don't have a computer. Some of us old folks don't have computers. I know it's rare, but this is the case.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for letting me comment.
Judy Benninger, Massey Road. I, I did get a letter, and if I wanna meet one-on-one with somebody, I should, I had a phone number, email, why don't email? So I dialed the phone number, and it's not a working number. Yeah, not a working number.
Can you give me a copy of that letter, please?
I have it right here.
Thank you.
Let me check on, maybe they got it fixed. I don't know. Here's my letter.
All right. Were there any other public comments?
I'm not, I wasn't done, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I, I'm just bringing up my letter here. Here's the other part, too. You know, it costs, it costs him $6.91 to nail it. What's the date? Can't you look? Well, I don't agree, this I swear. I did have another comment, that, the fact that, I'm concerned because they're built, they're gonna build, I call it a hazy couple, but Rich Hill Associates is gonna build all that development. Did you know about that?
Yes.
Yeah, they were, they were here.
They were here a while ago, right?
Yes, a while ago.
A while ago, I meant.
We don't know where the plan stands.
Yeah, well, they were at Richland Township.
Yes.
But, I, they asked them, like.
They're reworking it right now.
They did some, they did a little changes, they did some changes, but not great. I do.
Is it okay if I write the letter?
Where am I going with this is the fact that I'm concerned that if Richland Township lets them in the door and changes their zoning, will you just go along with Richland Township? Or how many houses by right can West Rock Hill have right in that spot? I had to ask if you'd report that for now, do you know?
I don't think we know where it is.
We don't know.
That's okay, that's okay. Yeah, okay, well, I asked them when they're going to come here and I, they, they seemed like they weren't going to, but they have to come, right?
They have to come.
And one other thing, I, I had said that there was a, that was concerned because of the traffic exiting out on the highway and two ones, Rich Hill Road. And you had said there was one on Tollgate and I sort of went, what? But there's not, just, I wanted, I wanted to correct it, that there's not, there's not another road going up Tollgate from there. Okay, so, you know, everybody makes mistakes, but anyhow, I, I want to also say that the, the houses there, I think, are concerned with Adelphia being there because I think, I don't know if it's a class one, two, three or four, because there's different classes. And so, I'm not sure what proximity of homes have to be there. So, I'm really concerned with the two people, I had asked, I asked Rich Hill Associates, do they have to tell Adelphia they're building? He said, no, unless I'm required. And I didn't ask him if he was required, I didn't ask him. But I'm concerned that, that they might be building the same day and Rich Hill Road, that's a lot of traffic.
Yeah, well, that'll all come to our planning commission and.
If you look at the, the videos, stuff with the meetings, we raised those questions when they came to us originally with the plan.
Oh, there's a video, oh.
They have YouTube videos that they take these meetings here every, every morning.
Oh, why not do that?
And, and I, I raised that question concerning Whalen Road because you know, living there, if you can't get out the three oh nine, people are going to go either over towards Shoe Craft, you know, out that way. Is that Tollgate that goes up to?
Uh, it's, it's.
Shoal school.
Shoal school.
Shoal school, yes. Or, or they're going to cut down Whalen to Green Top and then come out to the old three oh nine to get back up.
Okay, well, you know what they.
So, we did raise, we did raise those concerns and questions when they brought that original plan to us, but that's been months ago.
Yeah.
They had a whole new plan for.
They didn't change much, they did.
When we saw their plan, we weren't aware of the Adelphia thing at all.
Oh, no.
I mean, this, so this is, this is all now starting to really.
I'm concerned.
So, we're all, we're looking at all of that. I mean, that, that whole area there is really.
And just because Richland Township does changes their zoning, we're not going to change our zoning there, right?
We don't know what's going to happen.
Oh, you don't know what's happening.
We don't know yet, we haven't seen anything, so.
That's true, you don't go along with them. Please don't. And I guess that was it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have that or somewhere, but I'll get it there.
Judy, the mirror back, please.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we have another question?
Just one more comment, Rose Marick in Rich Hill Road. I just wanted to point out that so many people that we've spoken to that live in the nearby vicinity don't even know about the compressor station. I don't know that there was ever a notice put in because for something of this, a facility of this size with, the main concern are, is safety. This is going to be, what's that thing called?
Stack pipe.
Stack pipe at the time.
Not just one, a series of them.
Okay, we, we understand that.
Yeah, so it's really safety and I can, the Bucks County Emergency Management, they say they would help us after there was an event. But who's going to be left after there's an event, you know what I'm saying? So, just wanted to point that out, that a lot of people don't know about this and they need to know about it. Thank you.
I know it's been in the paper, it's been in the.
Well, we came late to the party.
It was on our website when we had a meeting, so, all that stuff. I'm sorry, I have another question.
Judy Benninger, I forgot, who do I, I would like a down R vein, Massey vein there. I like a sign that says, no turnaround. Who do I, did I ask you to go to?
One of the things whenever we want a specialty sign that you want, we ask for the residents to pay for it and then.
Oh.
Like, we do it for school bus stop ahead because it changes, so, it usually runs about a hundred dollars.
What about stop sign, do you make them pay for that?
No, a stop sign is a stop sign.
It's not a specialty sign.
It's not a specialty sign.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, how much, so I guess I have to talk to you?
Approximately, yeah.
Yeah.
How much?
Consider me, sorry to be late.
Okay, thank you.
Is that installed?
That's installed.
Okay, any other questions? Approaching. Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just make it for Holiday House Pool that we have our doggy dip?
Yes.
September the third, sixteen eight.
Yes.
It's a three year doggy dip to close our pool out for season.
Three dollars for members and five dollars for non-members.
Correct.
And it will be at six o'clock at night. And that is when the, that is the very minute that our pool officially closes for the year. Okay, thank you. No other questions, then I will adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you all.